I see five thirty, should we call to order?
Yes.
Okay, five thirty. Call to order, roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Fugazi is absent at the moment. Commissioner Irwin?
Present.
Commissioner Somovia?
Present.
Uh Vice Chair Endensberger?
Present.
Thank you, and Chair Benz?
Present. Okay, presentations to the Open Government Commission, three point one, public comments by members of the public.
No public speaker at the moment.
We will close public comments. Alright, unfinished business, city council correspondence sample, four point one.
Yes, so um.
Did we make a note that Bryce is subbing for our friend Jimmy?
Uh I can do that in the notes here.
Okay.
Already in the minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
Um so uh, what we're on table is a sample of a of a an outreach or a council correspondence form. Um we did do a search for other cities, see if other cities had something similar. Um usually it was just a recording in the minutes, something very very brief. Um we're still searching just to see if there's any other examples, but this is what we've come with, which is basically taking our um letterhead template and converting it slightly, so uh it'd be used by every commission. Um obviously, commission, the commission on the right would be adjusted to whoever, how the number uh the number of commissioners for each commission.
Mm-hmm.
Um overall, it's a memo style with message in the in the in the below section. The only big difference is that we have the vote at the bottom for uh that correspondence, just the case of a commission, you know, just like any other action of a commission, there may be even a dissent to whatever that communication is, so wanted to record uh to give a little more comfort for the the communication about who is supporting of it and who may be opposed to it. Um but then the commission chair signs, and the commission executive sponsor also sign as well.
And the executive sponsor would be Jimmy or
In this case, would be Jimmy.
somebody from the city, okay. Well, do we need a motion to accept this, or is this just
It's receivable.
gonna be part of our
Yeah, so we're good.
Okay, um is that it?
Yeah, yeah, unless there's any comments or or
You won't have to open public comment.
Let's open public comment.
No speakers, Madam Chair.
Let's close public comment. Um do any commissioners have any questions about the correspondence?
What would our process for using this be?
Our process for
For using this or for doing correspondence?
So, okay, so um if we want to change something, like uh I'm gonna talk about this later, and I don't see new business here, but new business.
What?
Um for instance, I think that instead of meeting quarterly, we should meet six times a year. Because it seems like we have inserted a couple of meetings, uh so rather than have emergency meetings, let's just have six a year.
Yeah.
But I think that that is something that the city council has to approve, according to Jimmy, yes?
By by, okay, let me refer to the bylaws.
Right, but do they have to change the bylaws?
I'm sorry, no, it's an ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah.
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, which basically is a by council, therefore we, if you were to example utilize it to request to have that, then you would write that through your council correspondent.
Got it, okay.
Right, right, so like, you know, Open Government Commission requests that
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
we uh change from four meetings to six a year, so that's just
Okay.
Or quarterly to bi-monthly, right?
Yeah.
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 I always don't know if it's like bi-monthly or
The dictionary says both, it doesn't help?
I know, I know, it doesn't help, but that would be an example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So something that the council, or a recommendation to the council, um that maybe, I don't know, maybe we've had people come in and suggest something that we think might be a good idea, we explore it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And don't we have some subcommittees?
Yeah, so like the outcome
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
of our hybrid, would this be a deliverable for us?
To the council or to the commission?
Yeah, to to plan a communication from the commission to the council?
A a draft.
Uh to the council, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But I think we discuss it first.
But it would be need to be part of the entire
Yeah.
Of course, so that we can take a vote and
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. But like, for part of our project plan, you know, we have to communicate to them, we wanna make sure we haven't dropped the work item,
Correct.
Yeah. and then we're not suddenly going, oh my god, oh my god, we have to hurry.
Right.
Got it, okay.
Essentially, so it's a any recommendations or formal reports that you want the councils to receive
Okay.
goes through this this process, and there it just falls under the section of the
Okay.
Council correspondent.
the council chair, the council response, so.
Yes.
Right.
So basically, if if you wanna see what the workflow is, basically the part of it would be the line item inside the new business, for example, you have a discussion of what you want to vote on the, what to be written in the letter. If majority approves it, then letter, it is written. And basically, the ch- uh the chair and Jimmy would basically write what the correspondence would be, and then letter will show the votes at the end, and then letter will be put in in the next council correspondence afterwards.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. So, next item?
Uh opening government ordinance, old training video.
Old training video, what do we have to say about that?
Well, basically, was just
That it.
I think we've had some discussions about this, and what we've said is that we would like to either see a new version of it, or we would like to add scenarios into whatever trainings we're doing.
Right.
Yeah.
Because social media makes imagining how to apply Brown Act rules harder.
So basically, yes, you know, the last meeting, it was to assign Commissioner Irwin to work with staff on the new version of the Open Government Training Ord- uh video.
Mm-hmm.
So this was basically, and this when we created this meeting here, was basically to discuss what the video would entail.
Yeah.
Right.
So basically, today's meeting was supposed to be the, basically the work plan of that.
So let's scope it out. Right.
Right. So you have the floor?
Well, so I'm wondering kind of what some of our options are. We have the old video, and then I've, I'm aware that there was a recent new training that has recently taken place. But in terms of
If by the city attorney to the council about the Brown Act.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Back last Monday.
I'm not sure if that's been, if that's recorded, if that's something with the council meeting or not yet.
That is recorded through the council meeting, yes.
Right, yeah, okay.
But I don't know that you would have a view of her, only write it 'cause it's a big view?
It's simultaneous, basically goes to the city attorney, and also goes to um the presentation.
It's kind of his line to
To speaker, okay.
To, yeah.
It was good.
It was so much better than the other, than the other one, but
Yeah.
My initiation video?
Yeah, that was, that was really
Yeah.
But I do want to note it, it was geared towards council, not geared towards
Yeah.
Commissions.
Commissions or to the public.
Right. Right, right.
So
Yeah, still a lot of good information in there, um.
Yes. I mean, the information is, you know, Brown Act still has to apply to every commission and committee that we have here.
Right. Right.
So, yes, but specifically, it was geared towards the council.
Yeah, I think my biggest questions are for us, what scenarios might we want to act out or have a plan to demonstrate in a video for other commissioners? Because there's, you know, can I retweet this person, can I, you know, respond to a Facebook thread that we've used in various discussions since I've joined? But my perspective and the experience of other folks will probably be a different thing. And that's an area where I'd like to have more insight or more feedback.
So do you have a, do you have a copy of the Brown Act?
I have one on my computer, yeah.
'Cause it seems like um there they spell out some scenarios. Um also, the First Amendment Coalition also spells out a lot of um like questionable, or not questionable, but questioning uh scenarios, like this might be a violation. Uh email, I think people get in trouble for
Yep, we've done email.
This, I know, we we have been down that road, and we've learned our lesson, um hopefully. So, but also, uh the social media, I I actually don't know the rule about social media.
Andy had some really good points there, and the mayor highlighted one of her examples where on Fred Tovar's
Facebook page.
Page.
page. She said, oh, sorry, I won't be able to attend that. And Andy said, yeah, that's one of those you shouldn't really respond to.
You shouldn't be, if you're a city council person, you shouldn't be um responding to another city council member's
You can't like
page or whatever, or posts.
Yeah, unofficial accounts. There's, so that's another thing in the training, the distinction between a personal account and a and your professional account. Uh and then there's certain things where it doesn't matter which, but then there's other things as far as like comments, and a lot of comments that vary, so there's a lot of complexity there.
So I guess there is a way that I'm seeing right now is basically there's the basic one-on-one on Brown Act that you should, you know, do
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, right.
for the couns- uh for the commission, and then there's, there's the new age version where basically the troubles of what you're doing in social media.
Right.
Yeah, that's kind of what I've been envisioning, and I know we've had some other examples where like people got into a fight on Facebook, or I've seen something dumb happen on Twitter, but I'm thinking from the perspective of commissioners interacting with other commissioners. That's also, like, that's also a totally different consideration.
Right. So
Yeah.
Right. So, three people cannot sit in the same coffee with the mayor next to each other.
Don't go to the same coffee with the mayor.
Well, you can if you scatter.
Oh yeah, yeah, okay.
You can if you scatter throughout the audience.
He brought up that subject too, not that you can't attend, but you have to attend as a member of the public, and you can't interject.
And you can't sit next to your commission.
Yeah.
Well, you can interject, you can ask questions, no?
I think Andy on the video, like if there's already three people there, and you're gonna create the quorum, you you
Well, so three
He said you basically can't.
So my understanding is three people can be there, but they can't sit together during a meeting, because then it looks like you're there as a body.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or it could look like that, and it could be a conflict.
But but Sorry, but you were correct, Andy Andy's response is that yes, you couldn't, if all through there, interject or comment or say something in favor of or against, because then it is revealing to the rest of your quorum feeling
Ah.
at a uh approval of something or disapproval of something, I think is the the thought, yeah.
Okay.
This does not stop folks from coming to the um to the coffee with the mayor event and just have basic discussion. That's outside the purview of the Open Government Commission for me.
Right, of of the Open Government Commission for me.
For example, if she was talking about the budget at the next meeting, have at it, because it's not going to be
How about, right. The sewer was the last one, that was very informative, I actually did interject.
Yeah. Yes.
But if she were talking about hybrid meetings, if three of us are there, and we don't control our faces, we would have a problem.
Yeah.
That that would be an issue.
Right. Right. Right.
Got it.
That would be an issue.
Hybrid meetings, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so is there anything that's more applicable to commission members about social media as well? Like, I don't know that the personal and professional account distinction might apply as much, but three people on the same comment thread on Facebook, if it's something that's within scope of a commission, would be a problem? Where if you're just like, hey, happy birthday, go Steelers, go Oregoners, that's not necessarily gonna be a problem.
Cut pictures.
First and foremost, Steelers, last for me.
It's, I don't know how to play sports ball, it was just an example.
Okay, that being said, um what I'm thinking, you could bring that our to top topic of discussion,
Thank you.
but Andy was pretty specific that if it's your account speaking to another official account, there should be no reply whatsoever.
Got it.
But if you're doing something on a personal issue,
Got it.
that's another thing. So, that's a distinction that you we have to make.
Mm-hmm.
Um the one thing I do wanna suggest is emails, that's something that they wanna do.
Yeah.
Uh you guys
They wanna cover email.
we cover earlier on the video.
Yeah. Right.
Um
Let's
And remember in emphasizing that no decision can be made until the actual meeting actually happens,
Mm-hmm.
because that's where you
Until it's agenda is um, yeah.
agenda is deliberated.
Mm-hmm.
Because the concept is like, if you're doing the, if you're having meetings beforehand and doing all your um investigation, that's kind of like expertise communications that you're doing, and you're already make coming to a decision that you don't want to do.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Um I have another dumb one, and then we can stop going through dumb scenarios. Say there's an article on social media, it's the Mercury News, they're talking about something we worked on, we don't like what they said. Somebody pops up in the comments, somebody else pops up in the comments later, someone else pop-
Who's they?
They being uh
Residents?
the Mercury News.
Commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
So, so the page is the Mercury News, and they publish some article or have a social media article?
Yeah. And maybe it's wrong, and we're like, no, that's not what we said, no, that's not what we did.
Mm-hmm.
But it's enough people in a comment thread to actually have the appearance of quorum.
Ah. So, it's not really, um nobody's gotten together to comment, but
That's not allowed either.
just random comments.
Got it, yeah.
That's not allowed either. And officially, as a commissioners, you should not be making any discussion about it.
Comments, yeah.
You have to leave that to the uh communications team for that. To if we
For like a press
Pro- press response or anything like that.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's a good one, 'cause I see that happen all the time.
Do you really?
Not to Gilroy, but I see people professionally
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
get their, knows out of shape about an article, and then go
Yeah.
grab a social media account, and the comments person comes back and is like, out of the process.
Yeah.
I'm doing.
Actually, it's really difficult when you're on the civil grand jury to not respond when the Mercury News gets it wrong, and they get it wrong a lot.
A lot. Yeah.
But you can do nothing, you can say nothing, you can not respond, you can't make a face, nothing.
I feel like I could see that maybe being more of an issue for like the planning commission, because so many of those things really pop off in various places, so that could be really applicable to them. Are there any other commissions or folks we would wanna think about who might have a specific scenario?
Well, you have Arts and Culture, and you have Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec does do some, you know, looks like some grants, if I remember correctly, right?
Grants?
Not grants, but uh there are some projects that they over, you sometimes will get.
Yes, they're they'll, yeah, so Harps gets a little more attention just because of the, yeah, the the recreation, so there there's a little more attendance and functions, and sometimes they make decisions or will make recommendations, let's just say
Yeah.
um to staff or to council, um so that that could draw more attention.
And Arts and Culture basically recommends certain arts to the council as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty, so far, it's usually not pretty, doesn't get a lot of attention, a lot of comments, but
Yeah.
So, the Arts and Culture though
Mm-hmm.
commission, seems like they're getting way more active in downtown.
In the, in the community, yes.
In the community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was downtown, I guess it was last Friday, and um there was, you know, twelve O two muse- it's not a museum, it's
Gallery.
Gallery. They had a huge opening having to do with Hot Cheetos or whatever it is. Um and so there were, there were no less than two city council about four commissioners, but different commissions, and then it was highlighting the art, one of the arts commissioners, so I mean, given it's a small town, you kind of run into that a lot, I think.
But a a social function like that are perfectly acceptable, as long as they're not there to to discuss business of the city.
To be business.
Mm-hmm.
So, as long as they are there just to be patrons of the art event, then that's perfectly fine.
So being in the same place is not necessarily a problem, it's just a discussion or a plan, that's a problem.
No. Exactly.
Yeah, okay. An example I can think of, it's from my HOA, is they have very strong rules on quorum. And at one point, a third person who would have created quorum walked up to two people meeting with the fire marshal, and one individual decided to keep quiet, walk away to remove quorum,
Mm-hmm.
and then they later got into it about, you're not supposed to do that. But I think generally, like, if it, if there's maybe an appearance or the topic of a thing that was on an agenda comes up, it's really just that the scenario should demonstrate, hey, cut it out, you know, work time is work time, fun time is fun time.
So we need like a safe word.
Quorum!
Actually, that would be a really funny script to do.
Fly away!
Okay.
Going back to the ideas.
Yeah, so I feel like we have a pretty good list of potential scenarios, and maybe what we could do to be more inclusive is pick a scenario from the perspective of another commission, and have a script that outlines that, so it's not like just the OGO says.
Right, right.
It's we thought of everyone.
Yeah.
And we can go through those in a future meeting.
So something that I think, it has not happened with OGO to my knowledge, but um to another body, um it was shobber name, made nameless, um is serial emails. So maybe an initial email is not to a group, but it's to one person, but then there's another person that gets forwarded and then responds, and so pretty soon you have a chain of
Yep.
many members.
There's, yeah, there's several different types, that's the one where it's the serial type that you discussed about, and there's the spoke wheel.
Right. Oh, I don't know the spoke wheel.
The spoke wheel is fun, because basically you have one member who speaks to another member,
Oh.
and then letter, that member leaves, but the other, another member comes in and speaks to him
About the same subject.
or her same subject, leaves, and another member, so basically it looks like a spoke wheel of people and members.
Yeah.
And that, and Andy actually gave a good example of that several, about last year, I believe, uh where there's this one, not from our city, there was this one mayor speaking to all of the council members, but he did it in a restaurant, and they were sitting at different tables.
Oh, wow. Not, not clever.
No.
Not clever.
But that's, you know, that's the spoken wheel type of, you know, that's a, that's in violation, because even though, and again, they were separated,
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
they were conducting business.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
One other example might be, it would be if um other community organizations, so like if they belong to a service organization, and there's a topic that's somewhat similar, so for example, we don't have the numbers to do that yet, but some of the Arts and Culture Commissioners are also members of the Gilroy Arts Roundtable. It's a totally separate body, but it's somewhat related, and
Oh, right. They're all starting to run together.
Yeah, so that that'd be one topic we could consider, 'cause you might have, like the parks, and the all the, you know, three of them are for the mom, you know, Lions Club,
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
and they wanna run a park out first, so there's there's some possibility for outside interaction in an environment that isn't set just for city business
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
comes up.
So, we have, what type of uh video ideas, so I can just put in like the minutes here?
Alright.
So we had several, we had three email examples. Um one was the spoken wheel, the other was the serial email, and then I think the other that we could include is not CCing everyone, 'cause we learned that one.
We've had to learn that one twice at least.
Yeah. Yeah.
Stop it.
Um for the social media part, we have some rules of engagement around personal accounts and professional accounts. Um and not conveying anything that looks like a decision outside of city business.
Okay.
Um for attending events, we specifically have the example of not making faces when someone's talking or presenting about an issue in scope of your commission.
Okay.
Darn it.
So I will go ahead and write that the we, the, there's e- uh emails, social media, and attending events.
Yeah.
Those are the parts of the Brown Act, but then there there's gonna be the overall Brown Act scope that
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Brown Act one-on-one.
Brown Act one-on-one, so
Yeah.
Yeah. And the plan there is to pick an example for every commission. So if there's something that's very applicable to arts and cultural working together, or Parks and Rec being involved with a bunch of different folks, we'll make sure that it reflects kind of the working life of folks on commissions. And we have to make a joke about the safe word being quorum.
Okay. Alright, so I have those
If you hear the safe word, quorum.
So we have technically four items
Mm-hmm.
for to work on the videos.
Yep.
Um alright, uh since, you know, it's about videos and is training, you're basically w- w- what do you plan into writing the script, who do you want to be in the videos? Where do you wanna record it, because, you know, we, you know, we need staff and what
Yeah. For a script, that's something I can write, the thing I would wanna do is make sure that we all have the opportunity to review, make comments,
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
and accept, reject, laugh really loud, and make everyone wanna come visit our meeting. Um I think once we have that, we can figure out filming. Ideally, if we're able to make use of the complex that's around us, someone over by the library, someone buy a garlic sculpture around town somewhere, that could be fun.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know um what our resources for filming would be, and if, you know, we're able to be a little bit more mobile.
Okay, uh that will be something that uh um Jimmy and I will talk about um when he gets back, but pretty much we would uh bring the communications team to help us
Okay.
with the filming and whatnot. Uh if we were to do this, if not, then I would, it would be myself or Christina, I'd be doing filming. So, fun trip.
I mean, I've heard that movies that win Oscars are filmed on iPhones these days, we can do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's come, come a long way, really come a long way.
Crowdsourced.
Okay, alright, so public comment? No public comment, well close public comment, and move on to four point three, Open Government FAQs.
So this one, if I remember correctly, looking at the So basically, if I remember correctly, there was an ad hoc committee created by Commissioner Somovia and Fugazi to be part of, and provide, and basically it's your show.
You're on.
Yeah, um and I vaguely recall that um Commissioner Fugazi was gonna allow staff to provide some additional FAQs?
Oh, I don't know, I don't recall that.
I don't, let me take a look here from the graphics here.
Yeah, on the notes, and then come back to us. I started jotting some down, and coming up with an example FAQ.
Yeah, I thought we had a whole list.
So, from what Jimmy wrote from last time, is what is the Open Government Ordinance? How do you get to the webpage in different languages? What are the top categories requested for information? How do I join a commission? How did the Open Government Government Commission, ah, how did the O- Open Government Ordinance start?
Right.
Wow, a lot of these actually were just answered from Andy, like especially number five.
How it started?
Yeah, how it started.
Yeah.
So that one was done.
When did he talk about that?
Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, of course, I didn't go to that meeting, nor have I listened to it.
He front ran us.
That's good, right, so the one thing that I didn't realize that I was gonna put in one of our deliverables, he said there's portions where the public cannot um provide comment.
Yeah.
Like, you can't ask, or you you can't address the attorney during his attorney's update, or the
So the administrator's update?
Yeah.
You can't have public comment, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right.
I, I didn't know that.
Well, that's just like um, like when you do a presentation, right, isn't it? I mean, he's, is he an employee of the city, and so that's why he's able to do a presentation?
No, he also meant city administrator's update as well.
Right, oh, but but what about like um the other people that
The the examples that he also gave would be like council correspondents, there's no, it's
Yeah.
Because that's not pub- um, public comment is basically given to reports by our actions that are being taken by, you know, that the council is deliberating on,
I better watch that meeting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
not on items that are just information only.
Oh.
So
Yeah, I just didn't realize that.
It, there is a fine line, like, and also, the mayor, he has the discretion to take it or not. It's just, you know, general practices not to take information that um is just general information only to begin with.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I started that uh FAQ document, I didn't send it to Terrence or anybody. I kinda talked to you briefly about how do I introduce
Mm-hmm.
stuff that I wanna put in front of the commission.
Well, this would be a good time to do it now, because it's part of the unfinished business here. So, you can bring it up to the whole entire commission.
I mean, but like physically provide
Oh, okay.
them a handout, that's that's the part
To physically provide a handout, just give it to me
Okay.
next time, and then letter Jimmy and I can uh review it and see if um we need, you know, if there's any questions we had, and if not, then we'll put it up on the
On the agenda.
on the agenda.
Yeah, 'cause really, I'm looking for, you know, how how do we vote on it if it's something that I'm working on as a subcommittee member? I can't just email everybody, and then
No, but you would you
No, no, but we have ties to a point of contest for that.
Yeah.
Yes. You can provide that information to me ahead of time, and I can put it in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then we say, no, this is a, this is not a good FAQ, or this is a good one, or maybe we're in a different way, or something like that.
Which I, you know, I'm, I'm open to input, I just
But
Yeah, yeah, that's how it does, it's done.
I I really didn't realize what's the avenue for getting something in front of the group.
Yeah. Right.
'Cause by the time I get the agenda
Me And Jimmy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's too late for me, I mean, we've got seventy-two hours, and I don't wanna go back and say, hey, Ty, here's my deliverable. Yeah, that that's the part I'm struggling with.
Well, here's the thing, you can, the the Brown Act states that for regular meetings, that the agenda has to be out. Does not say anything specifically about packets.
Right.
It's just common prac- best practices that we put the packet out at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
In the past, we've have amended the packets before with items that uh were submitted late, and we have provided to the council, so that's not an issue for here. Um since this was also a special meeting, and we provided this back on Monday,
Mm-hmm.
if you provided me that correspondence to me, I would have just attached it to the rest of the council.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Any files?
Yeah.
Okay, public comment?
Uh no public comment.
We'll close public comment. Assistant City Administrators update, that would be you.
Uh no update, uh no update this meeting, uh but um uh under Jimmy, Jimmy will be back, and there was, so it's one other thing, we talked to Erz
Budget was passed.
Oh, the budget was passed, yes, so the work plans will go into effect for your next meeting as far as what was approved by council, and there were no changes.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, for example, the um hybrid would be in the next meeting.
Yeah. Cool.
Oh, cool.
Because it was actually in the minutes, it states that uh City Administrator Forbes reported that he will be releasing the budget to the council on May twelfth, and the public will release it a little later, he further stated that once council adopts the budget, the commission will work on the hybrid meetings at the next regular meeting.
Got it. So it's dependency wise, that the budget had to be passed before we got it?
Right. And that will be in August.
Okay.
Um do we have anything else? Do you have anything else?
No, nothing else.
That's it, okay.
Okay.
I think we can adjourn, right? Six o'clock, six O one, six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Adjourn.